The county council comes to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Optional prayer, Carol, do you have a prayer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. We gather with our fellow council members to govern. We need to reach beyond everything we know so we can teach each other to use our talents and our feelings and limitations, not for manipulation, but for the betterment of all. We are extraordinary in the fact that we can teach each other, help each other, and listen to each other. Help us to listen and never fall short. Never fall and be compassionate with each other. Our divine Savior help us to expand our views and accomplish all that we can. Teach us how to live through the example of our heavenly Redeemer. Amen.
Amen. Row call, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Lowell?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here. Before I go to the hearing of public, I just want to make sure that we put it in the record that we didn't start until 4:28 because of our fire drill. Thank you. Next is the hearing of the public. Those that have called in will receive five minutes. Those that haven't would receive three minutes. Laura Nicholson, please. Please state your name and your address if necessary.
My name is Lori Nicholson. Is this on?
It is.
My name is Lori Nicholson. My address is 8390 Steretania Road, Girard, Pennsylvania, 16417.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead.
You're not timing me yet, right?
Yes, I am. I'll start timing you right now.
Thank you, sir. I am Lori Nicholson. I am also the founder of Parental Alienation Awareness of Pennsylvania. Pennsylvania has recently recognized parental alienation as abuse, a serious issue. Pennsylvania is a jurisdiction that recognizes parental alienation according to case law, WCF versus MG 115A 3D 323, PA Super 2015. Imagine being disconnected from your children. You possess no criminal record. You have never been deemed unfit, neglectful, or abusive, but yet you have no access to your child, nor do you see your children. Where do you go for help? As an advocate, I'm unable to refer families anywhere as there are no community resources I deal with parents each and every day. I offer them support or a listening ear, although this is not what these families truly need. They need specialized programs to help their families. There are two parent suicides each hour. Parents that have been alienated from their children. The effects of alienation on a child include 63% of the teen suicides, 70% of juveniles are placed in state-operated institutions, 71% are high school dropouts, 75% are children in chemical abuse centers, 85 of those are in prison, 85% of children who also exhibit behavioral disorders, 90% are homeless, or they're runaways. However, the Suicide or Crisis Services hotlines do not know what parental alienation is. Parents cannot call the United Way 211 and receive assistance or a referral as the subject is unknown. Local mental health professionals lack the education or qualifications to deal with families dealing with alienation. This county needs programs and services in place to assist this growing issue. There are 22 million families nationwide, an average of 50 million children experiencing alienation. We have programs in place for every walk of life, Erie County Reentry Services and Support Alliance for criminals. We have the Justice Youth Works Program for families involved with OCY. Numerous programs for addicts, veterans, citizens, senior citizens, and the mentally ill. Erie has the caring place for children grieving from the death of a parent, but where does a child or teen go who has lost a parent that is very much still alive? What about this little girl standing next to me? Where do I take my daughter to help her with the separation from her three siblings? How about this father over here, and this father over here, and my husband who's been through this with me for 12 years? There is not one single program in Erie County to help the families of alienation. Do you understand? There is nothing. I invite you to Google it. Go ahead. Google parental alienation help in Erie County. What you will probably find is information regarding my support group.
Thank you.
We desperately need to get services established here in Erie County. In our local support group alone, we have 20 parents and grandparents. Out of those families, I have counted 44 children that I know of in this area that are involved. There is absolutely nowhere to turn for this serious problem. Disconnected families of alienation need help. Your job is to represent this county as a whole. This county needs to promote the best interests of children and their families that are victims of parental alienation. As a parental rights and child advocate, I am requesting services or programs to be put into place if Erie County, I'm sorry, in Erie County for disconnected targeted families of parental alienation. I would gladly meet and discuss this topic with any one of you further. Counsel, in an email updated yesterday, in part, and I quote, "As a group, counsel does not support attaching its name or endorsement to this cause." My question to you is why? Why won't you support a cause that benefits our families? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Paul, did you want to come up?
Chairman Leon. I'm completely unprepared. For the record, my name is...
You have three minutes, sir.
Paul Kiss. Did she have, could she, did she have any time left? Because if she had that, I'm glad to...
That was done. You wouldn't be able to add to her time.
Please don't start yet. Please don't. I'm just relaxing. I'm completely unprepared.
That's all right. Take your time.
And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and ask you for a moment. And I looked around at the room before I came in, and there's a lot of gray hair, and a lot of you may not have biological children. I have two. I'm 55 years old. I'm a veteran. For me to say that I'm an alienated parent is insignificant to what is actually internationally, nationally, and internationally recognized as child psychological abuse, DSM, PAGE, blah, blah, blah.
May I interrupt? We didn't get his name and address.
No, no.
Did we get his name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. He mentioned his name, which was Paul. It's fine. We apologize, sir. Go ahead.
5:48, Mr. Will. Paul Kiss. I was, on my way here this evening, I was in tears twice. A good friend of mine has written this book and is in Connecticut right now, and he is implementing, as we speak, the Toby Center for Family Connections. Dr. Mark Rosman testified 10 days ago in Connecticut to a similar body, a body that was asking for your ear to help understand parental alienation. I said that for me to say that I'm an alienated parent is minute compared to the psychological abuse that children are under daily. Our responsibility as parents is to love and nurture our children and not to psychologically abuse. I believe I'm going to term or time...
Paul, your time is up. Thank you.
I do, I do thank you.
Thank you.
I do thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else wish to get up? Anyone else?
Little State Councils, my name is Arthur Dickerson, and I am a vet, and I live at 2679 Cochran, Erie, Pennsylvania. I've been alienated from my son for nine years. When my ex first ran away with him, he was three months old, I had seen my son a couple times, and he's 11 now. I haven't really seen him most of his life. And, you know, with my emotions and all that, I have thought about suicide. I'm not afraid to say that because I haven't seen my son in years. I get to talk to him now, but that's about it on the phone. But he doesn't really know who I am, know my name, or anything. But I just wanted to say, but we need something in Erie County to help people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? If not, thank you very much. I'm going to break from our tradition to try to explain a few things to those that did come here. I've been here for quite a few, number of years. Been through a lot of projects as far as OCY is concerned, and many issues that I see are issues that have happened in the past here in Erie County. The only, the only issue I'm going to tell you is that the issues you're dealing with have nothing to do with this council. The issue you're dealing with needs to be changed as far as the law itself is concerned. We don't have that ability to do that. We do not have the, there's not going to be any more speeches.
Nothing to do with the law.
That's the problem. The law is the one that controls what's going on as far as OCY. You know, I've been involved with it, like I said, for many years. I was involved years ago when Brad Folt was the district attorney here. We looked into everything we could to try to make changes. We can't. And that's the unfortunate part of it. It all comes from, stems from the law itself. Only the courts can make that change. This council has no power to do that in any way, shape, or form. And it has to be done through the state of Pennsylvania, through your legislators, through your senators. That's the only way. Please, you're not going to be able to speak anymore. You want to speak, it'll be the next council meeting. I'm just trying to relate to you exactly where we're at and the reason why we say we can't take it on because we don't have the ability to be able to change the law. We can't do that. Without any further ado, I'd like a motion...
Chairman, move to approve the minutes of the November 13th, February 5th, and February 14th meetings of county council.
Second.
Moved by Carl Faust and seconded by Scott Rastetter. Any comments on that? Any changes? If not, row call, please, Mr. Clerk.
On the minutes, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Next, reports of county officials, county executive and/or his designee, her designee.
On tonight, Mr. Chairman.
No reports, thank you very much. Next is the Finance Committee. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Finance Committee met on February 14th, Valentine's Day, and I know strictly in preparation of my birthday, we all were in agreement on the items that we moved forward. And so, on tonight's agenda, at the finance meeting, we are moving forward under new business, A, B, and C. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next is Personnel Committee. Mrs. Fatiga.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On following the finance meeting on February 14th, the Personnel Committee met and agreed to put items D and E on the agenda for tonight's meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Fatiga, reports under other. Carl, you asked for the time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to give a report on the election board and updates on what the committee is doing to all of council, but to give an update to you, Mr. Chairman. And the, as has been previously reported, we had a very successful vendor meeting late in January, so I won't get into that any further. But since then, the committee has met. They are collecting the data from that vendor meeting. They're taking their job very serious. I want to thank our clerk, Doug Smith, and Vice Chair Kathy Fatiga for all the work that they continue to do on the committee and all of the members of the committee. So last week, we once again met prior to a vendor coming in, and on February 13th then, a vendor came in unison group, and we had a very good discussion with them. We then had to, council members had to leave and go to another meeting, but the IT folks in particular had an opportunity to really drill down on some of the more technical aspects of their services and the machines they're providing. And just wanted to inform council once again that on March 13th, we will have another vendor coming in, and that is ESNS. They will be coming in for a second time. So, Mr. Chairman, the committee continues to work very diligently, and we hope to have a report to all of council within the next two months. And that concludes the report for the Election Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. You have another report?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I also wanted to report on the Pleasant Ridge Manor Committee. All, if not all, a majority, I'm sure, of council has gone to tour the site. We are continuing to collect data. I certainly want to thank Councilmen Horton and Lowell for all of the work that they're doing with the committee. We are diligently compiling the data that we're putting together and the reports that we've been receiving from other folks, and look forward to presenting to all of council within a month that particular report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other, anyone else? Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, council, friends and residents. I'll try to be brief this evening. I'm here this week, and just like the last meeting, and probably the next meeting as well, I'll be speaking about the Erie County Community College, or lack thereof. We know the Department of Education met in January, the 9th and 10th, but beyond that, we don't know that our application was taken up at that time. What I would like to see is more frequency and reporting from the administration. Mr. Lee, who was heading up the community college application. In 2006, this community, all the captains of industry, manufacturers, many of the surrounding school districts, several of the colleges, all came to the conclusion that Erie County needed a standalone community college. Couldn't find a local sponsor. All the data suggested that we needed it then. All the poverty numbers were off, our children weren't getting the opportunities, and still aren't. Every matrix that you could think of said that Erie County should have a community college, its own community college. Couldn't find a local sponsor. 2010, the application came forward again, or the request came forward again. Only thing different from 2006 and 2010 was the numbers had gotten worse. There were more children in poverty, and more economic indicators or factors saying that we were not racing towards the top, but we were in fact managing our decline to the bottom. So, in 2016, this body, which I'm proud to say, had the fortitude and the willingness and the will, and the political will, to say that yes, the working men and women in Erie County do deserve such a tool in workforce development, and that we did deserve to have all the things that the rest of the Commonwealth had, and that our children deserved all the opportunities that other children in the Commonwealth have. We deserve the opportunities that children in Senator Scarnati's district has. Sadly, that's not the case. I come here and I say that we're number 47 out of 50 states in job creation. Erie County doesn't have a standalone community college. Come here to tell you again that we have the poorest zip code right here in Erie County. In fact, housing our county seat right where we're sitting, where we're seated, where Senator Lachlan's office is located, is the poorest zip code in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We need a community college. I'm here to tell you that GE, or Wabtec, or GWAB, or WabG, whatever it's going to be, I'm telling you that dislocated and affected workers need a community college. I'm telling you that the trades, the apprenticeships are great. I'm a tradesman. I'm a 30-year member of organized labor, served on the executive boards, was an auditor. So I believe in the trades, and I know that the community college could help deliver, and it's an important piece, an educational tool that would help in that apprenticeship and workforce development training. Erie County needs and deserves its own community, standalone community college, not a, not a closed-circuit, distance-learning, 66-student, nine-county matrix. But we need a matrix that will, that will meet the problem, the scale of the problem that we have here in Erie County in being able, and not being able, to field, or to furnish, or to provide a skilled workforce. Erie County needs its own standalone community college. There's not one north of Interstate 80, has been one built in the last 25, 30 years. The compelling factors, I could go on and on and on and on, about all the compelling reasons Erie County, and not just Erie County, but any community in the Commonwealth that doesn't have access, should have access, to a standalone community college, not a brick-and-mortar building to pacify us from the Erie Regional College that Mr. Barnes comes here and expounds on at every meeting, and doesn't stay around long enough to hear any other rebuttal. And we invite them to come stand around and listen to any other rebuttal. If it sounds like we're getting a little bit more direct, we are, because the stakes are higher now. Because guess what happened since the last time when we did say that we would sponsor? Erie County stepped up. This body stepped up and said we would pay one-third of it. Guess what happened since then? The numbers have gotten worse. There are more children in poverty. We're still managing, racing, managing our decline. Every community, there's no community that can consider itself thriving. I don't care how much Renaissance, how much development, education is still the civil rights issue of our day, and here in 2019, we're still fighting Brown versus Board of Education-type issues. We still don't have black educators teaching children of color. Erie Regional College distant learning won't do anything for the remedial part that's going to come out of a broken or failing school district. Erie County needs its own standalone community college. And I'm imploring those same partners, those same captains of industry, those same manufacturers, those same school districts, those same halls of higher academic education, those same partnerships, grassroots organizations, those same people that were excited before we passed the application off to the executive branch. We need you to come back and exercise that excitement, because we can't afford to let this opportunity slip away. It won't come again. 2006 it came, 2010 it came, it won't come again. Erie County needs, deserves, our children need, deserve the same opportunities that our state legislators in Harrisburg deserve. They deserve, they deserve the same opportunities to work themselves out and to earn and learn them, their way out of poverty. Erie County needs its own standalone community college. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to echo Councilman Horton's sentiments and say that I am equally as passionate as he is about a community college. I was not in this body when you stood up and passed the support for a community college. I was actually sitting on the other side in a board member of Empower Erie, and am, as I said, equally as passionate about this issue. I will always be a yes vote for the people of this community in supporting a community college. But beyond what Mr. Horton has already said, there are some growing concerns of lack of transparency and openness with the, the way the application is now going through the Department of Ed in working with the administration. This body, who was the body, as Mr. Horton said, that originally put forward the plan for the community college, deserves to be a part of that process. And in fact, and even more concerning is the fact that Empower Erie, who has a memorandum of understanding, an MOA with Erie County, is also many times left in the dark. This is concerning for the citizens of Erie County and where in fact the community college stands on the state level. And as Mr. Horton said, we should continue to raise our voice and raise the pressure on what is actually happening with a community college for our area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments? If not, there's no old business this evening. I'll entertain a motion for making second reading of ordinance number 5 and...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Anderson?
I'd like to move that we move ordinance number 5 and number 6 to a second reading this evening and amend the agenda. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Fatiga. Any comments? Row call.
On the amendment, Mrs. Fatiga?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowell?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Okay. Ordinance number 5, second reading of ordinance number 5, entitled only, Mr. Clerk.
County Council, County of Erie, Pennsylvania, ordinance number 5, 2019, an ordinance of the County of Erie, Pennsylvania, the county authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a guarantee agreement for the benefit of Pleasant Ridge Manor, Pleasant Ridge, and compliance with the provisions thereof, and incurring non-electoral debt thereby, approving a $700,000 letter of credit agreement from Pleasant Ridge to PNC Bank National Association, directing the proper officers of the county to take necessary actions, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances.
So move. Second.
By Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Ordnance. Comments? Row call. On ordinance 5, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Scott, there are three copies.
Next, Mr. Clerk, ordinance number six, entitled only, please. Second reading.
Second reading of ordinance number six, 2019, six 2019 general fund budget, supplemental appropriation of $10,122 for rehabilitation of Human Relations Commission offices.
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On ordinance six, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Next, Mr. Clerk, title only of the resolution number six.
Resolution number six, 2019, opposing changes to the Medical Assistance Transportation Program, MAPT.
Some move.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call.
On resolution six, Mrs. Law? Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Dr. Faust?
Move to approve the appointment of Nathan Miller to the Erie County Planning Commission and the appointment of Chantel Hilliard to the Human Relations Commission Advisory Board. Without objection, do that in one vote.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Any comments? Roll call on the two appointments.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Move adjourned, Mr. Clerk.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.